But we're gonna have to go with it anyway, because you can't rectify the situation right now. So, we will call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here.
Morissette?
Here.
Wakefield?
Here.
Knutson?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Brooke?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
All right, the first thing up then is comments and suggestions from citizens present. Let me just say here at the outset, if you are here for the public hearing, this is not the time to make your comments, okay? These comments, this section of the agenda, and you will have an opportunity later on. This portion of the agenda is for anybody that would like to make a comment about issues that are either in front of or could be, should be in front of the city council that are not currently on tonight's agenda. If you do have a comment, please come to the podium, identify yourself and your address. Please try to keep your comments brief, try not to repeat other people's comments. So, does anyone have a comment? Yes, sir. See you back.
Yes, good to be back. Good evening. Nate Homstall, the commander of the Hudson VFW. Want to let you know what Hudson's post has done, because our end of the year was, is June 30th. And we got our report card from the state last week, and it is official. For the first time in over 45 years, we are an all-state post. Now, the trick is to keep it. So this year, we were the second overall post in the state. And that's from, this is what we've done for the community this year. And I'll just give you the high points. Over 1,000 community service hours. Multiple Boy Scout Eagle Projects, Girl Scout Gold Awards, Silver Award. We sponsor the wrestling team, the choir, and a myriad of others that I'm sure I'm gonna forget unless I open the book and look. We've had a heck of a year. We've had such a good year. We even invited now past state commander Ron Ramos to be a part of our post.
So, we now have some mentorship going forward.
And in this year, our 80th year, I found out that our post mustered right here, literally, in this room on December 7th, 1945, 80 years ago. And in 80 years, I don't think they've ever asked for help. So roughly 30 years ago, the post lost a building off of UU. And we know that there's gonna be a consolidation coming up for the public work, public works buildings. We would like to be part of that conversation to get one of those buildings possibly. Now, nothing's for free, we're not asking for a handout. We're asking for help. We're not coming alone. The Lions, the Legion, and the Rotary. I still owe, I talked to the Daybreak Rotary, I have talked to the Afternoon Rotary. They're willing to come with us. So it's not just us asking. According to our bylaws, we would control the building, and they would be with us. Now, we can't give them numbers, because we don't have numbers yet. So that is all that I am asking. And, you know, I remember my first, the first meeting, first time I was here, I saw the power of petition. If that's what it takes, that's what it takes. So, does anybody have any questions?
We can't take questions.
I know, but that is my comment, and thank you for the time, and I did come in under five minutes.
All right, Nate, thank you, very, very nice job, great, great work, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing none, close that portion of the agenda. We now have the 2024 financial report presentation. Sam?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As I get set here, Dave Minch, the city's audit partner, could not be here this evening, so they called in the B squad here, and you're I V. The only difference between the issued financials and the, what is in the agenda packet, is under the accounting policies, oops, I suppose I should focus. Under the accounting policies, the draft financials say that our capitalization policy is $1,000. If you remember back to the last meeting in December, we changed that to $10,000. So that is updated for the issued financials. You also have in front of you a letter from Dave indicating kind of the highlights of the audit. The presentation that follows is based off of that, and then my discussions with Dave as well. So the opinion that was, that was given for the financials was a clean or unmodified opinion that, that, the definition of which is, all, the financials are, I gotta think back to my, my audit days here, I apologize. The financials are fairly stated in all material aspects. This is the highest level of assurance that the CPA firm can give, basically meaning that they've, they've signed off and said that these financials are good to go. A couple of noted changes from the 2023 financials to the 2024. We implemented GASB 101, which changed the measurement of compensated absences. Not a material change, but there was a change from previous years there, based on the new GASB pronouncement. You'll note that in previous years, we had SPITAs, which is GASB 96, and then leases the years before, and GASB 87. So those are now rolled into the financials. I think next year, we're, we're not looking at any material new GASB pronouncements, so hopefully we can take a breath there. The next thing is that the library is no longer considered a component unit of the city. It's considered a governmental fund and is rolled in with the main financials. Because of that, we did not restate, or excuse me, we did not post a comparative year, so 2023 is not listed within the financials, because we would've had to go back and roll that back in for an additional cost. Oops. And I'll note there, I should go back, oops. With the library, we did run that by Sean at Ellers, along with our bond attorneys, just to make sure that it wasn't, not going to affect anything like that. Getting down to the nitty gritty of it, the general fund ended with a general fund balance of $5,388,184. This is up just slightly of the $1,762 from the year before. With that, 4.72 is undesignated, meaning that it can be spent on anything. This comes out to about 39.2% of the expenditures for 2024. In speaking with Dave, he likes to see any of his clients between 25 and 40%. As your finance director, I like 40%, a heck of a lot more than 25, because it gives us a bigger cushion. I'll note that there is still a liability for ERPA funds still on the books of $339,449. That really is just because we have not spent the money for the splash pad yet. We signed the contract in December, the check has not yet been cut. So that, those monies needed to be obligated, meaning a contract signed by the end of 2024, and the money must be actually spent by the end of 2025. So no concerns there, but there is still a liability on the books at the end of the year. Statement of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance, that's a profit and loss in the private world. General fund revenues and excessive expenditures are a profit of $1,762, and as mentioned before, that $5.3 million fund balance. Looking at both of our TIDs, both of them had profit or revenue in excess of expenditures. TID 5 of $346,000 and TID 6 of $707. I'll note, the, the fund balance in TID 6 did become positive this year, so we're starting to see a positive growth there in that TID and a good performance out of that TID district. Out of our utilities, operating income for water of $677,912, and a change of net position of the $923,000. The difference between operating income and that net position being interest, expense, and interest revenue. So quite a bit of red just revenue taken in there in 2024. Same with sewer, income of $356,000, or operating income of $356, and an overall change in net position of the $843,000. Looking at the city's debt load, and that does not include the 2025 offerings we're gonna talk about later tonight, but state statute says we are limited to 5% of our equalized value. As you can see, preview, prior to the 2025 A is being issued, we have outstanding debt of the $46 million, leaving us with $121 million that we could, that would be the state maximum. We're well, well under that, and I'm gonna successfully talk out of both sides of my mouth, because later on tonight, one of the comments we received from Moody's is that we have a slightly elevated debt load compared to peers, and by peers, I don't just mean in Wisconsin. So we're well under our state statute limitation, but we are a little bit higher when we talk with Moody's. The management letter, which was also attached to the, the agenda tonight, had three findings. The first was that we had, we, a weakness in our segregation of duties. It noted the, the number of staff we have with myself, and during the time of the audit, another .5. Staff member, it's hard to segregate all the duties. We do the best we can, I can't approve my own journal entries, I can't approve of my own wires, the other staff can't do the same, but we, we can't do it all. So with, with the number of staff, we do have some segregation of duty issues. I expect most of those to be remedied with the, the starting of our other accountant position last week.
Sam, can I stop you for a second?
Absolutely.
Is this, is this a repeat of, of the audit, or is this something new?
This is a new finding within this year's audit.
What's the difference?
We were down another staff member from previous years.
Okay.
So we, we had 2.5 within the finance department, we had some on the, the year end this year. So we were down to 1.5.
Before that staff member was added, I don't remember this as a finding.
I can't speak to previous audits off the top of my head, but this was a finding this year.
Go back and look at that if we could.
Understood. The next two, I would expect for us, and I would expect them in previous years, and we've had them, or in years going forward, and we've had them in previous years. We request the auditor's help on some of the new GASB pronouncements and making those. For example, GASB 68, which is our OPEB liability, there's an actual real report that goes with it. And then GASB 75 and 101, we asked them to help us make some of those technical journal entries. Certainly, not, not a concern on my part, but would expect them, and I believe Dave said 75% of his clients have that, that, that finding. The next is a finding that I've had at all my previous stops. A few years back, GASB changed the ruling, or rules, where they said, if you had contracted out your financial statements and don't produce them in-house, it has to be an audit finding. So that's this financial report, we contract out and have Curboros help us draft the financials. So it has to be a finding. This is my last slide, but a couple of notes that were a bit concerning to me. One was that our AR has aged mostly over 90 days, I think 97% of it. That was a eye-opener for me, and we'll be working with staff to start to collect some of that and get that number down. And lastly, I thank you to Dave and his team at Curboros. They've been great at answering my questions before the audit, during the audit, and after the audit, and they've been a great partner, helping me get on board. So with that, opening up for questions.
Anybody? All right, Sam, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, public hearings, we have a public hearing for rezoning application at 327 Third Street from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Two-Family Residential, ordinance 10-25, Todd Ellingson. This is a public hearing, it is your opportunity, anybody in the audience or on Zoom? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
There's one.
One, besides Nick?
Yeah, but they can't hear us.
Oh, great. All right, so it's your opportunity to comment on, on this particular item. If you would like, once again, please come to the podium, identify yourself, your address, and make your comments, try not, try to keep your comments brief, try not to repeat other people's comments. So does anyone have a comment? Anybody here for this issue?
Hi, my name is John Clemency, I've been in Hudson now as a resident since 2021. And just to clarify, this is for if you want Airbnb or any kind of rentals, is that right, Mayor? Or is that coming up later?
This is, no, that's later, this is just specific to this...
The Third Street?
327.
Okay, you know what, I apologize, I'll be back then.
Okay, thanks. Anybody comment on this? Yes, sir.
Hi. I didn't know if anybody has any questions. I'm the owner of 327 Third Street, Todd Ellingson. And so, just wanted to make sure that you had my application and all the materials with it, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
Not at this time, we'll probably, maybe a little bit later when it actually comes up on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
This is for other people to make comment on this.
Okay.
But they may have, they may have questions for you.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody have a comment? Any comment on this particular item? It's ma'am.
Mayor and Council? I live on Third Street Hill, and as a resident there, I am prepared this evening to object to the rezoning of that property to duplex status. Thank you.
Can you make her state her name?
I'm sorry, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am?
Yes.
Could you state your name, please, and address?
Mary Ellison.
That's spelled differently?
Can we ask why there's an objection? I'm sorry.
She is Ellingson.
Yeah. Did you, would you like to come back to the mic? Are you willing to take questions?
I guess I will.
What was your?
I represent the people that live on the hill. The main objection we have is to the limited amount of parking on that hill. And this particular lot is very small, it absorbs almost the whole area of the lot. And as I looked at the zoning that is required for a duplex, I don't see any way that it's possible to have two off-street parking spots for the owner of the duplex and two more off-street parking spots for the people that are renting the other property. And our ordinances, as I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that those parking areas are supposed to be nine feet wide and 20 feet long. There simply is not room to do that type of parking in that area. And I object to that. And also, according to city ordinance, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, 25% of the front-facing yard of that property is all that can be used for parking. And in order to accomplish all of this parking, there would be no front yard. Does that answer your question?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison, appreciate it. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved, public hearing is closed. Rezoning application at 327 Third Street from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Two-Family Residential, ordinance 10-25, Todd Ellingson.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, obviously, this is one that we've had quite a bit of discussion on, and there was a somewhat split vote at the Plan Commission, it was a 5-2 vote in favor of recommending approval of the rezoning. Obviously, the applicant is desirous of doing an accessory dwelling unit on top of his garage. You may have questions for him, specific to the concerns that we heard from the public. With that Plan Commission, you know, recommends approval to rezone from single-family to R2, which is a two-family residential home.
There was considerable conversation as the Plan Commission member on the parking issue, and that was my objection as well, along with the letter that was presented on January 31st, 2025, where he decided that he has mentioned in that letter, Mr. Ellingson, that it's possibly gonna be an Airbnb or rental. And I didn't think it was jurisprudence for us to approve it at the time, because we're going through an ordinance rewrite. But between the parking and that is why I objected, and I more than likely will object again tonight. I've heard it from the residents of District 1 on the hill, they are not in favor of it.
Could I ask a question? Am I correct that Mr. Ellingson, as the property owner, also applied for a variance due to the size of the deck or something like, is there something about the property line that has already been, I believe, approved, correct? What was, could you clarify?
It was an encroachment in the rear yard, so I'd back.
Okay, and, and was it for a deck or just the rebuilding?
Yeah, it was, it was for the deck.
Okay, so that did pass and was approved?
Correct, yep.
So that, I mean, it's obviously following our, our procedures laid out, requesting exceptions and so on, but I, I do share that same concern about the parking and the density of housing. But I just want that clarification, thank you.
Anybody?
Mike, can you comment on the parking and how much room there is for the parking?
Well, I think a lot of it is really part of the license application. And obviously, we can't take a rental license, a short-term rental license application at this time, right?
Right.
And where he plans, where the owner plans on parking too, you know? So there would be, you know, if there's two cupboard stalls inside and then two outside, right, theoretically, it would be okay. But it is, I can totally understand the concern as well. It's a challenging lot, you know, it's on the hill.
Have you seen drawings of what he's proposing, or?
We don't have an application, but we have...
It's too polar, Mayor, for this?
No, not necessarily, I have not, no. Not to say they aren't out there.
Are the, are there onsite parking, or is it off? Like, is it street parking currently right now as it is?
No, there's onsite parking, well, it's, it's under construction right now too. Mr. Ellingson could probably speak to it more specifically.
Well, my question too, how about on-street parking? Because I believe that hill during the winter is marked for no on-street parking, for plowing, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it is.
Is parking allowed other months of the year or not?
I think there's, well, and we can, Mike, more or less.
The, the street changes as we go uphill, so it is variable. But it's definitely marked no parking during plowing season, or during a plowing event, for sure. Sure.
I believe, having lived there, people do park there during the wintertime.
They do. On the street?
Yeah.
Further up the hill from you, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The hill itself is marked.
It is marked, yeah.
Right to before your property, which is open in the summer, and in the summer, that is used as parking for the general public.
Right.
We know that more than likely, if you have a rental there, they're gonna park there as well. More than likely, because you have, what, just a garage that's tucked under, and probably two spots there in front of the garage?
Correct, yep, yep. And one, one spot can be covered in a garage, because the assumption is this R2 application would be for the long-term, 30 days plus. And so with that, the occupant could have availability to, under, you know, in the garage parking.
So there's two parking spots on property right now? If you added this additional, then those would need to be street parking?
No, there's two spots in the garage. One of which could be available to the
Tenant.
Person living above. And then there's also room on the driveway for another car. So there'd be no off-street parking.
Without getting too detailed, so if there's four cars, two in the garage, and two directly behind to get access to the street?
But there wouldn't never be four, four cars.
Well, if you're living there and you have...
One car.
Well, right, if you're living there right now, one car. A year you sell the property, and someone else lives there, wants to continue this, the two cars in the garage will be blocked potentially by the two cars behind them to get street access?
Oh, okay, okay, I see.
And I think, just kind of going with, with Ray, is that I think that if, if someone was a renter, they might say, I don't wanna get up in the morning, move my car to get the car out of the garage, and move the other car over here, I think the street will be used, I think that that's kind of...
Well, or, there is, but there is, you know, I've measured it, there can be one spot on the garage that does not block the garage door.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one car, one spot on the driveway.
Okay.
Driveway that does not block the
Okay.
Two cars in the garage.
Yeah, he just...
And it's, it's a one, it's a one-unit.
One bedroom?
One bedroom.
Okay. And a lot of time, I mean, I, I appreciate the work you put in there, because it's, you know, you plan to live there.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah, be there full-time.
But I think we have to, as, as, Council, we have to look at that if you weren't, if you weren't there, for whatever reason, you move, you, we're zoning this for the property, not necessarily for you. So if you decide to move, we might have a different operator that might have different goals with the property, is, is all I'm saying, so.
The license or any conditional permit would not be transferable.
That would not, but the zoning would, so, yeah.
Can I ask you to clarify the garage driveway? So are you saying, yes, two cars can be in the garage, you're willing to share your garage with the tenant? And then your driveway has room for three cars on it?
Well, the driveway has room for a car that does not block the driveway.
One off to the side?
Correct.
So two in front of the garage door and another one off to the side?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, am I describing it, I don't wanna put words in your mouth.
You could certainly...
Sure, okay, thank you.
Have that, yeah. Yeah, so the intention is not to have any offs, you know, on-street parking.
What's the size of this lot? How many acres, what part, part of an acre?
Yes, well, the acreage is, it's kind of two subplots back in the day. Let's say it's...
One second. You know it's this house right up the hill.
Yeah, I know.
We could open the window.
Yeah. Let's see here. Don't have it on the application, it's... If anybody's real good with math, it's 73 long and 46 deep, basically, or 44 deep. So it was, it was an extra, because most of lots up there are narrow and long, this is just the opposite.
Can you address the, the 25 feet, there wouldn't be a front yard with the parking if that's, is that where the garage is now, that where the cars would be parked?
So the, working with Rhett, the inspector, the, the code, the house, is 12 feet setback from the sidewalk. And then the garage code is 17 feet setback from the sidewalk. That's the code. And then the garage is actually a little further back, just because the way the architectural, you know, it's probably like 20, it's close to probably 22, 23 feet setback. Answer your question?
I wasn't sure where she got the 25 feet. I believe it was not going to be...
Yeah, I don't know.
The front of the, the house. I wasn't sure if that, I don't know, is it 25 or is it 12, that they need to be set back from the sidewalk?
I was just going after what Rhett had said. So I've been working closely with him. We're trying to get, we're trying to get our attorney in line.
Oh. Is he guys on the top, say?
I don't think he can hear us right now.
I do appreciate you changing the look of the house. So, I mean, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I think it's bad timing, and I don't know if you want me to wait, but I'm going to move to deny the rezoning request at this time. Basically, a lot of it because of the parking issue, and it's just not a suitable place to have. And we know common sense is telling us there's going to be people parking on our hill in the, in the street. I just don't see that being in a nice, neat package, as you would suggest, or whole. It's just the wrong thing. I've heard what the neighbors said. That hill has been an issue for us for a long, very long time, speeding-wise, sightlines, et cetera. And I don't want to put any more undue burden up there as it is, so. That's my motion.
And did you receive? Just one second, sir. Okay. We've got a motion in front of us. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to deny. Mr. Ellingson? Yeah, just, did you happen to receive my next-door neighbor that document?
No.
So just, just for clarity, that it's not everyone. It's my next-door neighbor, which is the probably most impacted, was in favor of it, just for the record.
All right, any other discussion? Anybody got any questions?
Is there a minimum lot size for a, a two-family residence?
Yes. I'd have to look at the exact number, but we have minimum lot sizes. But this is a lot of record from long, long, long ago. I don't have the exact number.
But it was a lot of record prior to 1993, or whenever our last zoning code was established. So I think he meets minimum lot size.
He meets, meets the minimum lot size, okay.
Anybody else? All right, so we have a motion, a second for us, motion to deny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Request is denied. Thank you, Mr. Ellingson. Public hearing for land use amendment application of tax parcel 236-2046-01-000 to amend the comprehensive plan use designation from neighborhood commercial to medium-density residential, excuse me, ordinance 11-25 Divine Custom Homes. Once again, this is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to comment on this issue. Once again, this is not about the short-term rental, okay? So if anybody has a comment on this issue, please step forward to the podium, identify yourself and your address. Please try to keep your comments brief. Try not to repeat other people's comments. Does anyone have a comment? Yes, sir.
My name's John Felhoffer, F-E-L-H-O-F-E-R, 14 Heritage Green.
I'm sorry, what, address?
14 Heritage Green. Okay. Okay, there was a meeting with the Divine Corporation on April 3, and we brought a lot of topics to the, to the table with the representative. The two I'll talk about are the new subdivision that's going in there, whatever you want to call it. It's mandatory to become a member of HOA. I understand that's more of an HOA business than a city council business, but previous developers have tried not to do that. And because this is going to be a multi-density, it's going to be a dense dwelling, a lot of people there, kids, we have a lot of parks and things like that. They use the parks. They need to pay for the upkeep of it. Otherwise, it's not fair to everybody else in the corporation, in the subdivision. So hopefully, our master board will take care of that. The representative from Divine said that they would. In order for them to do that, because members of our master boards have to be property owners, someone owning property in that new development has to be a member of the representative of the board. People that are leasing cannot be. So if they are going to build it and it's all going to be leased out, I don't know how that's going to work, unless the owner of the place is the onboard member. Second topic is, the in and out to Hanley is very, very busy. It's right across from Uline, a lot of big traffic, traffic going through there. And we're just hoping that a traffic study is done, because you're going to put a lot of people in a small place of occupancy. And hopefully, there's parking for them somewhere in the back of the residences. But most likely, they're going to park on Heritage Boulevard as they're coming off of Hanley. That's just going to be a very, very dense, dense area. A lot of school bus traffic there. Our subdivision is just full of kids, and that's a concern. And also, there's a lot of, lot of line of sight concerns. Subdivision was put, started 20 years ago, has a lot of monuments in place, and there's some line of sights as you're coming up Tribute and want to go to Hanley and interface with Heritage Boulevard. There's a large monument there that's a Master, Heritage Greens master-owned, that is a line of sight issue right now, and I just can't see that staying there. So if it has to be adjusted somehow, the Heritage Greens master board should not have to pay for that. So I guess that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Susan York. Live at 113 Tribute Avenue. We did not make the April 3 meeting, but we do have great concerns over this development. As we just moved in last fall, did not know that this was being proposed. Obviously, we don't know what the timing is. But we are concerned about the home value going down as a result of this multi-family dwelling going in. I don't know how big it is. I don't know what, if it's an apartment building or townhouses, but I know I'm not supposed to repeat concerns, but traffic is atrocious already. Sometimes it takes 10 minutes to get out of that development if you want to go out and take a left because of time of day, you know, depending on when people are coming and going. But it's also the noise. There's a lot of noise from Uline already. Now, we're putting in a multi-family dwelling that's going to increase the density of people in that area. I guess the last point is, the reason why we bought there is because we loved the open space across from us. We know that it's not a captured thing, but it, it's just sad that it has to be such a densely populated building that's going in instead of more family homes, because as my neighbor had just pointed out, that there are a lot of kids, there are a lot of families, and it just concerns me that there's now going to be leasing and, and a, you know, a rental or leasing scenario where we're not sure what the dynamic is going to look like, as well as not part of the, the HOA board. So those are my concerns.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir?
I'm Bob Anger. I live at 101 Harlem Avenue, just a property just adjacent to that area that they're talking about. My biggest concern, again, is the, the amount of traffic that's going to be there. Where are the, where's the access point onto, you know, the, the main road there? You know, if they're going to be parking there, there will be no way to get through there, especially with the school buses and stuff like that, because it's, when people do park on the one side of the road, is, it gets pretty narrow right there with the way it turns in and stuff like that. So hopefully, that's being addressed. And again, a parking issue, are they going to be parking out of the road, or is there enough parking back behind these, that multi-family housing for that, for all the cars and stuff?
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hugh Gwynn. I live here in Hudson on Cooley, but I'm the president of one of the sub-associations in Heritage Greens, and I serve on the master association board for Heritage Greens, which is made up of four of the other subdivisions within Heritage Greens. We did meet with the developer. He had a noon public meeting during a workday, and a lot of people could not be there at that time, but we still, I think, had about 35 people there. The curve in the road at that, at the entrance going north from Hanley is pretty tight. The, my understanding is the proposal that you have shows a entrance, two entrances. It was presented to us at that time that the west entrance would be an emergency exit or entrance only, and that everyone would come through the entrance farther east and come down through. If that has changed, that's different than before. I understand that many of these things may be the concerns that the master board has about the density of this particular development and the traffic flow may be handled after the zoning takes place. And there are a lot of concerns in the neighborhood based on the density, the visual triangle, and other issues. And I just want you to be aware of the fact that the master board is particularly concerned about some of these issues at that location, and that you would be mindful of our participation as this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir?
My name is Nick Bilderback. I live at 111 Tribute Avenue in the same development. I just want to speak in support of what was said already. Try not to repeat anything, because most of what I would say has already been said. So just standing up, speaking in support of that. My biggest concern for this, I was not able to make that noon meeting on a Thursday. I would have liked to have been more informed, come and talk to you about this, maybe have more specific concerns to speak to, and I hope to maybe learn more about what the plan is in the future. My biggest concern is that this is not what this was designed to be used as. I believe that it was zoned in a certain way with this entire development for a reason. So it is, as has been said already, the density of this that concerns me, that I have a nine-year-old daughter, and there are other children that live in that area, all very safe, well-minded children, but there already is a high volume of traffic that comes through there, and I can only see this increasing the traffic at a medium-density level, not knowing the details of the units and bedrooms in each unit that are proposed for this. So my biggest concern is, is the safety of the traffic volume and just the land use, the appearance of this. It's going to, it's going to change definitely the dynamic of that south end of that development. We may not have bought our home there a couple of years ago if this would have been under construction or existing there. So mainly for the safety concerns, I would hope that, you know, visual concerns would be addressed in other ways, but just wanted to stand up and speak in opposition of this being rezoned for this type of a density and use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion, second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Public hearing is closed. Land use amendment application of tax parcel 236-2046-01-000 to amend the comprehensive plan use designation from neighborhood commercial to medium-density residential, ordinance 11-25 Divine Custom Homes.
Thank you. To be, to kind of just set the framework for discussion, we aren't having, this isn't a rezoning discussion. It's already zone Planned Residential 3. The zoning would be staying the same. What we're looking at is an amendment to our future land use plan and our comprehensive plan. Currently, the comp plan has that space designated as neighborhood commercial. So the comp plan, historically, not just the most recent comp plan, but the one before that envisioned that site as a neighborhood commercial space.
For example, what would be on that neighborhood?
Coffee shop, or, you know, it could be a, I don't want to say a gas station, but something that would serve the neighboring residences, you know, to and from work, or places of recreation, or travel. So just to clarify, it would remain the same zoning. What would happen if this were to be approved is the developer, obviously, there's a lot of planning. There is, you know, obviously, some fairly detailed diagrams and concepts in his submittal, but we would, he would then apply for a conditional use permit to amend the, the master plan for the Heritage Greens development. So that would be what would be the next step. You know, he's, he's proposing, at least what he has currently, is seven row homes, one with three units, six with four. Access, obviously, is something that would have to be discussed, you know, in further detail and engineered and analyzed. But what we're discussing right now is whether or not it's appropriate to amend our, our master plan from neighborhood commercial to medium-density residential.
Mike, the, the plan was pretty detailed. It seems like there's, these folks that have been up at the podium didn't know what was being developed out there. I don't know if they had a chance to see it. Obviously, the meeting was in the middle. I didn't even make it either.
Right.
But there is no parking on Heritage Boulevard, from what this shows. There's one private street through the middle of the development with the one to the west, which Mr. Gwynn was talking about, which would be what, open and used or not used by the residents?
It would appear to be used by, it's a private street all the way through.
So it would be marked off as emergency only, which was explained to them that way?
Correct, but at a, at a neighborhood meeting, that's before we even have an application, right? So it's not a city meeting, so to say. It's, it's the opportunity for the applicant to take into what they have to say and then adjust and amend their plans accordingly, so.
It's my understanding you do need to have two entrance exits. It's not, it's not an option to have one that's only for emergency vehicles and one that there, that there needs to be two there. That's my understanding.
Yes, I believe so on this.
I don't know if that's true, because in the past, we've had closed-off exit entrances for fire vehicles.
A lot of it, yeah, a lot of it is dictated by public safety and what, what they need, and we haven't gotten to that point yet. You know, I don't know, Drew can probably speak to it a little bit. I don't know if he's reviewed it at all. I mean, we're at the land use.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, to answer the question, was there enough information for us to move it forward? And I know you're asking us to... information for us to move it forward? And I know you're asking us to possibly change the comprehensive plan through to medium-density? Is that what you thought of commercial, neighborhood commercial? So then, do you, do the folks up there realize what commercial could realize even more traffic, more garbage, more cans, you know?
Noise.
Noise, without having the flats up there. I think we could work with the developer to address the executive's decision, committee's parking issues. By all means, we've done it in the past and had enough berms up there and trees and whatnot to reduce that kind of thing. And that's something we could certainly have them to work with. They've done, others have done it in the past. But commercial density or neighborhood residential, where do we, where do we?
Will these be rented units? Do we know the intention versus sole? Pardon me?
If you're going to answer a question, please come to the microphone.
If the question is, are they going to be rented?
Yes.
Yeah, they won't be rented because we're going to do leases in our subdivision with the minimum of a year. But yes, the majority of those, we believe, I believe, will be leased.
Thank you. Okay.
With, with, yeah, with that. Okay?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Another concern I heard was a traffic study. Would that be part of the process too, or could we ask for that to be part of it, if it's not?
Certainly, we could.
Anybody else?
Could you describe what medium-density means? How many people living per square foot?
It's, it's, it's very specific to what the property size is too, right? So your floor area ratios, you have your parking, you know, there's always so much open space requirements. It's kind of hard to, because every property is unique, right? So medium-density generally in the comp plan, I believe, goes up to like 16 dwelling units per acre. But usually, you can't get there.
That's pretty tight.
But you can't because it's, you know, there's just not.
Other regulations. Okay, thank you. I was just wondering if that would be an avenue that the city could work with the developer to have fewer units there. So it was fewer people, less traffic density. Obviously, they want to get the most value from their property. I understand that. A common motivator. But, so what you're saying right now is you haven't gone through those fine details, sharpening pencils with them.
Research initially, but we haven't gone through the full on, okay, here's what's gonna, here's what he's proposing, you know, and what, you know, what all does that entail? And what does that mean, you know, with the survey and everything else? Is Mr. Warren here?
Yeah.
Yeah, would you want to speak to?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Jeff Warren from Divine Custom Homes. So I think what I'm doing right now is just the steps that are required to get to the next step. And the, the idea is that we would build, we would be building multifamily, depending on, building conditions and pricing at the time would depend on if it's for sale or if it's rental, a rental project. If it was a rental project, I would own it. The, and in fact, actually, just like Mike said, we're just taking it one step at the time. So the next step would be now then to develop the site plan, follow all the ordinances that are, that need to be in place.
Subdivision.
And, and, yeah, subdivision ordinances, and then bring that to the table for review next. So all we're really trying to do right now is, the next step is to get the right zoning to do that.
How many acres is the property?
I can't tell you off the top of my head.
What was the question, Joyce?
How many acres?
And so, did I hear you say that depending on the price involved for you, it could be, where you try and sell the units, or you might try, it's just too early to tell?
That yet, right.
And if you think you're going to lease them, are you likely to do market rate, or are you likely to do something towards workforce?
It would be market rate, upper end.
Okay.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion?
So Mike, can you give us the what-if? If we say no tonight, he comes back to the drawing board, or what can he do? And if we say yes, we're not approving the project?
Correct. Regardless, well, then it just stays neighborhood commercial. And then it's.
And then you don't know what they're going to get.
Right. And I don't think the intention is for that property to remain neighborhood commercial.
Right.
For future land use. Correct.
So the what-if?
Well, the devil's always in the details, right? When you get to going through the process, right, the CUP, the amendment to the, you know, the Heritage Greens, CUP, or like, that's how we, we do the conditional use permits for planned residential districts. There's a lot that you could push back on if you wanted to, or say, okay, this is good, or this is bad, or, you know, this is, the traffic's the problem, or what have you. But there's plenty of steps along the way to hopefully, you know, satisfy everybody.
So no harm, no foul, we advance this tonight, and if something was to come up, listening that the residents didn't get anything addressed during, or the executive committee up there didn't get anything addressed through the process, we could pull the plug on.
Oh, yeah, you can always deny things. Right.
Down the road.
Right, correct. It's two and a half acres.
Thank you.
Mike, I heard you say it wasn't the intention to keep that as a commercial use. When you said it wasn't the intention, who's, whose intention? City staff?
No, I think just long-term, no, it was, it was a carryover from what the previous comp plan had. We didn't change it. We left it the way it was, you know. I don't know what the commercial viability of that site is, especially now that everything around it is residential. I think it'd be a
Okay.
A difficult.
When Heritage Greens was initially developed, it was kind of a, a place to start and end. There are townhouses rentals, there are single-family homes, there are paired homes. And as you age, you kind of end up in paired homes, in the cottages, and then assisted living. It's all in there. And when that original idea was about, they were, that's when that piece was going to be commercial, and then it just wasn't really viable.
Okay.
So it never happened as far as that being developed as a commercial piece. And so it's, it's sat vacant. And my concern is, it's not going to stay vacant for, I mean, something's going to come along. I think we have to work cooperatively and try to do what's best for everyone involved there, as far as traffic and looking at what kind they, how they look, how they fit into the area. That's my understanding of.
Yeah, I agree too, that, and I live somewhat near there too. I know that those streets are specifically narrower. It was kind of meant to be a small neighborhood feel, thinking the narrower roads, the slower the traffic, because of all the families living there. So that being said, you know, you mentioned, you want to hear from, you know, everyone that lives around there, but, you know, also, the landowner gets a say in it too, because they own the land. And I'm with you, something's going to come in there. Everything's, every green space we have right now is going to be grabbed at, because we don't have a lot left. So kind of following where you're coming from, Mike, if we move this to the medium density residential, I think that that's a small step to, to take the commercial end of it out of there without, but then let's go back to the drawing board. I think the density, which has to do with parking and traffic and whatever, you know, obviously be willing to work with that. I think, if you do the math, there's probably, you know, what, 27 units, four people per unit, over 100 people. That's a lot, but it's better than a gas station, or a, you know, another Starbucks, for example, if, you know, cars going through the neighborhood. So I will make a motion to, to approve this amendment.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Don't we have to suspend the rules? We've got an ordinance?
Yeah.
Hit Robert's rules. I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Marsette?
Yes.
Wakefield?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended.
Nobody, I wasn't consulted.
Oh.
What? Joyce Hall. Joyce Hall, sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, Joyce.
Apology accepted.
I'll move to approve the land use amendment.
Second.
All right, motion, second to approve land use amendment. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from the June 2, 2025, regular council meeting. Approve the claims in the amount of $378,444.28. Approve the bid from LA Blacktop Company in the amount of $239,426.95 for the 2025 street maintenance project. Approve bid from Haas Sons Incorporated in the amount of $371,815.77 for the 2025 street rehabilitation project. Approve the certified survey maps and the conditional use permit application for the master plan amendment of Park Place Village Divine Custom Homes. Approve, approve the request to set a public hearing date for a rezoning petition from R1 Single Family Residential to RM2 Multifamily Residential at tax parcel 236-2001-02-040, Carmichael Ridge, The Doran Group.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second to approve consent agenda. Roll call.
Marsette?
Yes.
Wakefield?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Paul? Yes.
All right, motion's approved. Consent agenda is approved. Discussion possible action on the second reading of ordinance 8-25, amending chapter 141 of the municipal code of the City of Hudson, short-term rentals. Onward. We have Nick.
No, we're, we have. Hi, do you want to go up to the podium?
Sure.
If you could. So after listening to, we updated the memo with everything, kind of based on that discussion we had at the last council meeting. There was some miscommunication between staff and the attorney's office in omitting, keeping the planning district language in there. So at your, at your spaces, I did include a map of what those planning districts look like. Remember, districts one and two are combined for this purpose. So that's just a visual for that. Obviously, the vast majority are in one and two. So looking at keeping that language to cap at no more than 15 per, per planning district. The other big discussion and research, and James has done some, I think there is probably some additional discussion and research that needs to be done on the owner occupancy side of things. And thankfully, James did a lot of, like, a lot of really good legal research and work on this. I don't know if you want to add to anything, but.
Yeah. So there's a Wisconsin state statute that indicates, I believe it's, it's six or seven consecutive days, you can't attach any, any things like, you know, the property has to be owner occupied to it, any conditions, that is. And so based off that statute, strictly speaking, the updates that were made to the ordinance worked. But in practice, essentially, you could have someone who could apply for an application for a short-term residence saying, I am only going to rent this out consecutively to people for eight days or more. And yet, it has to be owner occupied, but under Wisconsin state law, you wouldn't be able to do that. And so what I did was I included a carve-out in the ordinance that said, if in fact that is the case, then it wouldn't have to be owner occupied. So that was a little bit of research that I did, and I made sure that that update was reflected in the ordinance that I sent out earlier today as well.
So say that in layman's terms, so people understand what you're talking.
Yeah, right, yeah. So of course, in the legal community, you work with a lot of what-ifs, right? And so what I'm saying is, of course, you could have someone come to you and say, I'm only going to rent this out for the weekend, it has to be owner occupied, no issues. But technically, you could have someone who could come to you and say, well, I'm not interested in renting it out consecutively six days, you know, or less, or seven days or less. It's one of those two numbers. They could say eight days or more, that's it. And they could look at that and say, based on the ordinance, it has to be owner occupied. Well, under Wisconsin state law, if it's more than six or seven days, you can't have any of those sorts of things, any conditions to renting it out like that. And so I created a carve-out in the ordinance that says, if someone were to come to you like that and say, I'm not going to rent it out for three consecutive days, it's going to be eight days or more consecutively, well, you don't have, it doesn't have to be owner occupied. Because that could be an issue potentially down the road for the city if you had someone who wanted to do a short-term rental for that amount of time or greater.
Wouldn't it be cleaner if we just left it out?
You could potentially do that. And if you wanted to do that, I would recommend having two applications through the city. And so that's something that you could do down the road, certainly. But the way, you know, when you include it, then you make it crystal clear to, you know, people before they submit an application that this isn't going to be an issue, or it's not something that could become an issue down the road.
When you say leave it out, Randy, what are you talking about, the carve-out, or leave out owner occupied?
Leave it out, owner occupied altogether.
Oh, that's certainly a possibility if the city would like to do that, yep.
I, I do know the residents that have been impacted by this a lot, really would like to see something like that still in there, and they would actually like to see some more teeth behind it, some sort of proof that they are renting it or living there, occupying it, that six months plus one day.
Yep.
Something like a driver's license with that address, voter registration, tax documents. And I, could you please walk me through that one more time? I really want to make sure I understand this carve-out that you're talking about.
Absolutely. So
Thank you.
There's a Wisconsin state statute that says if, it's a, it's a right-to-rent statute, I believe, and it says that if you are, if you are renting a property for more than, I believe, at seven consecutive days, you can't attach any condition like it having to be owner occupied.
Okay.
And so you could have someone apply for a short-term rental who says, I'm only going to do 10 consecutive days or more, who applies, but then says, well, based off this Wisconsin state statute, you can't have any conditions like owner occupancy, right? And so I'm creating a carve-out for any, any person, any landlord who wants to rent out a short-term rental for that period of time or greater.
For seven, for seven days or more?
Yeah, it's six or seven days, one of the two. Yeah, I think it's seven days.
James, thank you for addressing this. I did want to comment that I did not vote in affirmative for the first reading because of my concerns and my questions about this. And I didn't feel I was getting them answered last time. And, you know, I asked directly, you know, are there, is it happening in other places in the state? So I've done a little research on my own, and I have seen that, yes, some other communities have specified it has to be owner occupied. That was my, one of my big concerns, and that's why I did not affirm, affirmatively vote last time on the first reading. Could you, so you sent us an email this afternoon. Did you include this new verbiage here? Could you point us to that? Because we've got, you know, documents, several documents here that are redlined and so on. here that are redlined and so on, but you emailed us something where you've inserted that carve-out?
Yeah, let's see here, let me pull it up. I don't know if the council got the whole updated one.
There were two attachments to that email. I just would be comfortable reading it, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, this one specifically, I sent the updated ordinance, and then I also sent a memo that gives a summary of all the updates. So if you pull up the, um, updated, uh, proposed short-term rental, home rental ordinance, um, the carve-out would be under section 141-4B specifically. And so it's going to be in blue and underlined as well.
And to be, and to be clear, I, I, it was made very clear that the, the council wanted us to keep pushing on, like, working at this, you know, um, um, and progressing. I, I did not envision necessarily the council approving a final reading tonight by any, any means either.
So let's go back to, to that. I, I think I, thank you for the, the clarification. For us to do that, though, Randy, your, your comment about, "Let's leave that out," that would be for just people seven days plus.
That is correct. Yep. So, and...
We'd still be able to control, someone wants to do weekends and, and all that.
That is correct, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Because the state specifies that they're allowed.
That's right, yeah. And I, I'm blinking on the statute right now, and I could find it again and send out a short memo to the council if they'd like that of the specific statute. Um, but I believe it, yeah, it's seven days.
So basically, we're just making that change because we legally have to.
We already amended our ordinance to six days.
That's right, okay.
Yeah, we have already amended that.
Okay.
Yep, that was one of the first things that we did.
Correct. So our ordinance states six days or fewer.
And, and there are definitely a lot of communities in the state of Wisconsin that have this kind of verbiage in their, in their ordinances, as Councilmember Knutson mentioned.
So, Randy, are you saying that you think it's confusing to include that part because we're not really writing the ordinance for people for seven days and over?
Yeah, it is. It's confusing, but at the same time, I just don't agree with us demanding owner occupation for their rental. That's just something I don't...
For any amount of time?
Yeah.
Take it out completely?
Yeah. It may hinder their business model, I don't know.
If you had a duplex, and you wanted to rent one side of it, short-term, and you're occupying the other side, you're saying that it wouldn't be required that they could rent both sides or down?
Yeah. Who are we to say they can't rent?
Uh, it just puts more people in the neighborhood.
Either side.
You know, short-term renters.
And it is the residential part. And it is our residents who are indicating that this is something that's important to them. And it has impacted their quality of life in their neighborhoods. I think it should stay.
I agree.
All right, so, um, did you want to make a motion on that, Randy?
Nope.
And run it out, see what happens?
Nope.
No? Okay. Uh, all right.
Could I circulate a clean ordinance, too, at the next meeting if we're not there? You know, I just want to make sure everybody knows exactly what it is.
Not a third reading?
No.
Well, I'm...
Two and a half.
You gotta learn sometime.
Lot of balls in the air. Right, we're, we're talking a lot, a lot of things. I, I do also have that hesitation about the owner occupied. I understand why neighbors next door want that and in that neighborhood and have been impacted. I, I definitely do, because that's someone they know who's periodically renting their home, uh, for extra income or whatever reason, and that, that feels much, keeps the neighborhood feel intact. I definitely feel that. I, my concern definitely was about, is it allowed in the state? And it's, you know, we've had that confirmed, that, uh, there is. I mean, part of me, I mean, a sort of property rights side wants to say, "Yeah, free and unfettered use of your property." That's something, it sounds good, and it's nice to get behind that and, and to say that people have the right to do that. But on the other hand, we have zoning for a reason. Now, this is not a zoning decision, it's separate from zoning, yet we are inserting and allowing rentals, short-term rentals, in areas that are zoned residential. So it, it does bear regulation, and the state and the legislature has held up that fact, that there, we cannot outlaw them. They are allowed, but we do have the right to regulate them. And, uh, I, uh, I, I can see both sides, but I definitely, because I do feel and believe in property rights and the ability to use, uh, your property following zoning and guidelines and approvals, but I also really want to protect the nature of Hudson and the neighborhoods. And so I tend to come down on, uh, I, I don't, I just want to say that I don't feel that just because residents want something that we get to pass it and guarantee it, because we'd have a lot of people that would want 15 mile an hour speed limits on their streets. And we aren't voting that into ordinance, so it's...
That's next meeting.
Right, okay. So it's one of those things that I think we have to have a balance of, but I know a lot of work has been done on this, and appreciate the legal input. Uh, but I, I do think we need to clarify what we're voting for. I, I don't disagree with what you're saying at all, Mike, that we understand, because it is complex.
And Mike, if I may add, I, I did find the statute to, um, it's Wisconsin state statute, section 66.10142A, which says briefly, "A political subdivision may not enact or enforce an ordinance that prohibits the rental of a residential dwelling for seven consecutive days or longer." And so someone could look at the ordinance without that carve-out potentially, but it could happen, and say, "Well, if it has to be owner occupied, that's stopping me from renting this place out." Um, and if someone wants to do it longer than that, uh, than seven consecutive days. So, I mean, that's where the issue could come up.
It clearly states that we intend to comply with the state statute.
Yep.
All right, anybody else? Mike, what do you want to do?
We'll keep our foot on the gas.
Okay. All right, so we'll bring it up again?
It's a good policy discussion, but something for the council to think about. That seems to be that last remaining component that, you know, everybody's got to...
Could we talk about the districts?
Sure.
And that, uh, Councilmember Knutson? Would you mind, I mean, what other changes were brought in?
Before we switch gears to that, just one little statement there. Um, as we look at doing that carve-out, so that there is some teeth to this ordinance, if we would consider some kind of proof of that residency for the ones that are six days or less, then...
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Knutson.
Do you want to?
Pardon me?
Do you want to talk about the districts?
Well, I wanted to ask, uh, Mike, you said there was a miscommunication that last time, uh, the redline copy that we were presented, uh, defined how many, uh, short-term rentals could be in each district, planning district, not elected official district. And now that, this time, this copy has a different verbiage, and I just wanted to know what your input and what the rest of the council thinks about that. It's worth discussing tonight.
And it was just an oversight when we were doing, when the legal research was being done, and that dropped off, but, you know, it's proposed to have that language back in. So planning districts one and two would be combined for this purpose. Then you have all the rest of the districts through eight. I don't really see a whole bunch happening in eight, but, um, there'd be no more than 15 allowed in any of those districts with a total cap citywide of 25. And the council would have the ability to, um, raise the limit or lower the limit, depending on, you know, I mean, it's a policy discussion, so, um, that's the, the only real change.
And I think that the council, those that voted to affirm it with the first reading, had taken away the fact that it would be tied to the population growth?
Correct.
Right.
That was just a set amount.
Yep.
And we had said 25. How many are in existence right now?
Fifteen, sixteen? Fourteen.
Fourteen, mostly in. Quite a few of them are in.
Twelve.
Mostly in one and two.
Okay.
Well, I don't think we took anything away just because we had a first reading. And I, Nick's not online, I assume, but...
He can't hear us.
Can't, okay.
Once we have first reading, that's just a framework. I mean, stuff can get added and put back in.
Absolutely, yeah.
So which direction does the council want to go? Do you want to have it specified by districts, or do we just want overall for the city?
So that was the question?
Me interested in your, yeah, I, because this time, the way it was written just said overall count.
And I, and I, I do apologize for that.
Well, I understand, but...
From what I understood, the consensus was by planning district.
And that language can be changed for a second reading.
Right.
Or third.
Yeah. Stop it.
Well, sure. I mean...
So he's just, he's just accommodating what...
Right, so I guess I'm going to ask other council members, do you still want to go with the planning district idea, or do you want overall?
I, I would like to see us stick with, uh, planning district one and two together, um, because I, I walked away from the last council meeting with, that was what our consensus was, that we were going to go by planning district. But planning district one and two were combined.
And, and also to, um, if you take a look at the, um, short-term, short-term rental ordinance that I sent out, too, that is what's reflected in the most current copy under section 141-7E specifically, so takes that into account.
But there needs to be a clear, defined parameter, because you're not just representing districts, or planned districts one and two, you're also going to be representing part of my district if you're visualizing it that way, which I would not agree with, because we both have input on that.
And I think, um, when I connected with city staff, they were thinking that it would be reflective of the downtown overlay is, is what we were using as the benchmark.
Uh, the downtown overlay is PD1.
Okay.
PD2 just concludes all residential.
Okay.
Surrounding downtown overlay.
All right, anybody else? Anything? Mike, you got anything else?
No, we'll keep rolling.
Okay. Everybody good? Can we move on? All right, thanks a lot.
Yep.
Thanks, Nick. Approve ordinance number 12-25, amending chapter 220, taxi cabs in municipal code for the city of Hudson.
So with this update, it was brought to our attention when we were renewing the annual taxi cab license, that, um, we did not have anything in our current ordinance that required a background check on the drivers. And per police chief and myself, we want to see that required in there. So that's just the language we added.
Good.
Okay.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Marsette?
Yes.
Wakefield?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes. Paul?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt ordinance 12-25.
Second. Motion, second to approve. Discussion?
I just want brief, I would like it made very clear by either Mike or Chief of Police about Lyft or Uber, and that there are no restrictions in the city of Hudson to have them come in or out. Do you want to clarify that, Chief? Because I know there's been a lot of talk about that and why we can't get them here, and it's nothing to do with the city.
No.
Can you ask a question again, please?
Clarify that there are no restrictions for Uber or Lyft service to come to Hudson. The city of Hudson does not have an ordinance dictating they cannot come.
I don't believe so. No, I don't believe there's any restriction in our current ordinance that restricts them from operating.
Yeah, I had heard this before, too, but, but not necessarily that it was a city restriction, but that it was an Uber or Lyft restriction as to whether they come in here. But I know that they're here. I know that they're in the city operating.
I just want to make that clear as long as we're talking taxi cabs.
Yeah. All right.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Then we get into, uh, bids and delivery of general obligation promissory notes, 2025A.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sam Haas, Finance Director. Uh, just to reset the table, last time this was in front of you, you authorized, uh, staff to go out for bid for the 2025A bonds, which are to pay for the 2025 CIP, the police facility, and the public works facility. In the meantime, uh, with the help of Ellers and Sean, uh, staff has gone out and obtained a Moody's rating, uh, at that rating. Uh, two items of concern came out as to why we couldn't get a higher rating, but we did get a very, I should stop and say we got a very advantageous AA2 rating. Those two items being, one, uh, the debt load, which we talked a little bit about in the audit, um, we are higher than some of our peers. And, uh, in talking with Sean, it's not unreasonable for Wisconsin municipalities because of the levy limits. Um, I would love to sit up here and tell you, boy, it'd be great to just levy for our CIP, but unfortunately, we can't do that because of the statutes. The other concern that they had was that they continue to see our, size of our city in terms of, um, assessed value and equalized value grow, but they're not seeing that, that expansion in terms of the city as an organization. So there's some level of concern, um, for us meeting our operational obligations. Um, so those were the two notes that they had for us. Um, but, uh, we went out with that AA2 rating and today, and Sean and his group got us a very advantageous, uh, rating of 398. Um, but with that, I'll let Sean get into the details.
said, uh, we did go out for bids earlier today, and I had a brief presentation I wanted to go over with the council and have you guys ask any questions before we would move on to the, the resolution. Uh, as Sam said, now, so just because he covered this already, real brief, uh, relay, a couple other feelings about the rating. I think as, as we've mentioned before, you guys are a, a AA2 using the Moody's scale, AAA is the best, then AA1 and AA2. And I would describe the city as a strong AA2, so they're not seeing a lot of downward pressure. Uh, they certainly talk about all the, the different things going on in the city from their perspective. When they talk about you guys and your peers, many of your peers are much larger communities than Hudson in terms of population, in terms of size. And so when they talk about your elevated debt load, two things come to mind. One is, in Wisconsin, you have levy limits. What are, one of, one of the very few things that is not subject to the levy limits is payment on geo-debt. So that, a lot of communities over time, in order to comply with those rules, then finance more and more of their projects with debt rather than cash. It's just an inevitable, uh, situation when you've had 20 years of, uh, levy limits in place. But as you look through the report, and I think, uh, if, if you haven't received the full report already, we'll get it over to you guys. Uh, would you encourage you to read it? And there's a lot of positive things about why you have the excellent rating that you've got. Uh, then let's go forward to the results today. As Sam said, we entered... up getting seven bids, which is a great, great number. Your great rating leads to having people not just from the Midwest area, but from all around the country interested in looking at the City of Hudson's debt. The winning bid was just a little bit under 4% at that 3.98. Second place was right behind it, 3.98 or 99. So really tight bidding, very competitive. The pre-sale report that we had discussed with you about a month ago, we had an interest rate projection of 455, and that included about a half a percent cushion in there, trying to be conservative with the market. So we even came in lower than that half percent cushion that we had built in before. So very good to see that. In terms of the results, I think you, the folks in the council remember, and the mayor will remember, we had a lot of discussion about issuing this year, but making sure that we stay below $10 million in tax-exempt debt for the City of Hudson in 2025. If we go over $10 million, we pay a higher interest rate to get to the bulk of the reason. When we calculate the $10 million, if you look at that summary of sale results on the right side of the page, you, under IRS rules and the direction from our bond council, the calculation is you sum together the principal amount, $9,735, and the re-offering premium, which was $260,000. So that, when we get a premium bid, that means the bidder is paying more than what we're asking for. They're allowed to bid with a premium or with a discount. And so when we sum those two together, you're coming in just below $10 million. And that's why, I think we had talked about an issue more in the $9.9 million range, but with the final results today, we're at the $9,735. On the left side of the page is, with acceptance by the council this evening, this would be the 20-year repayment schedule for the geo- notes, promissory notes, in the amount of $9,735. These interest rates would be locked in this evening with acceptance by the council. The first eight years of the 20 years would be non-prepayable, but starting in that eighth year through the 20th year, you could start making prepayments, or let's say in year eight or nine, lower interest rates were available in the broader market, the council would have the option of refinancing the entire issue and locking into lower, lower rates at that time. We were very pleased with the results. The best bid was from BOK Financial, their headquarters, well, they got a couple headquarters, but they have a big presence in Milwaukee here in Wisconsin. They buy a lot of debt, so they're certainly a reputable group that we're very comfortable purchasing the City of Hudson's debt. And so we would recommend approval of that winning bid. But prior to taking action on the resolution that your bond council has put together, I think the council had a draft of that in your packet. The only difference between what was in your packet and what the final form for your action tonight is those numbers from the bid today are now reflected in that resolution itself. But before, Mayor, before any action on that, if there's any questions I can answer from either you or the council, be happy to do that.
Anybody?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thanks, Sean. All right, we have a motion?
Move to adopt Resolution 17-25.
Second. Motion, second to adopt, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Department reports. Clerk?
Working on filling the deputy clerk position. We had 31 applications, so hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have some interviews set up. And it, this, a reminder that there is no July 7th council meeting, so the next meeting will be July 21st. That's really all I got.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, Finance report.
If I may, could I please, will you please go back to the old business? I wanted to talk.
No, apologies, no, I mean, we're already through all that, so.
Well, I didn't get a chance to speak.
I apologize, but that's really out of order right now.
Okay.
So, but, but you heard, I think your issue is short-term rental? Is that right?
No, I'll talk to her back up.
Well, and you, I think you also heard that it's coming again in the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
All right, no problem.
I'll be there. Have a good day.
All right, thank you.
All right, Finance report for Mayor of 2025, 2024, excuse me, 2024 audit is complete, as you heard earlier. The Finance Group continues to work on the 25 bond offering, as you just voted on. And the accounting position has been filled, and Michelle Lopez did start with us on, we could go today. So she is doing a great job thus far in helping fill the workload. Upcoming items, 2026 budgets. This might be news to my fellow department heads, they're getting an email tomorrow that it's time to start filling out your budgets for 2026. So they're here to hear first. And then I will be attending the National GFOA convention, or conference, I should say, not convention, June 29th through July 3rd in Washington, DC. Oh, any questions? Sorry.
Anybody?
Thank you.
All right, Library report.
Hello, everyone. Shelley Tugus, Library Director. We are about two weeks into our very busy and probably most fun time of year, summer reading program. Two weeks ago, we had our program launch event, and we had 1,382 people attend. So it was absolutely wonderful, so thrilled. It's just, it's a really fun time at the library. If you have young people in your lives, still time to sign up and win prizes and have fun reading. Our big events are mostly on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we do move storytimes outdoors in the summer. And so let's have some better weather, because it's really not fun to have your young ones in the rainy park. So hopefully we'll have that turning around here very soon. The other thing notable, one of our staff members has been tracking volunteer hours, which is a great thing to be able to report. We are getting about 100 volunteer hours a month. And I asked her about that, because it's really a nice amount, but she did tell me that it does not include our history room volunteers, the volunteers with the garden club, the friends of the library, or members of the foundation, or our teens. So that number is a lot larger than that. And our teen librarian let me know that the teens volunteered this school year 500 hours.
Wow.
Which was really fantastic. We have a great group of young people who are really involved with the library in leadership roles and in volunteering. So, any questions?
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Police report.
Good evening, everyone. So our calls for service list is attached to the agenda. If there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to take them. Other than that, we will be going on Thursday to 10 Mile Creek Golden Doodles to pick out our facility canine, which we will then pick up and officially adopt on July 4th, the way it sounds. So that is approaching quickly. A lot of excitement, not only in our department, but around the community about that, so that's exciting. Quick report on the protests in, or the event in the park, the No King protest in the park this last weekend. Well over 1,000 attendees, there were no issues. So that was good to see.
Thank you.
Very, very respectful group of people, didn't cause us any problems. That's all I have for the update.
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Good evening. Attached in your packet tonight was our monthly report with our call volume, our inspections and everything. Couple items of note, we do have our fire inspector job offer was accepted by an internal candidate. They'll be starting July 1. We're going to be holding an informational session July 26th for hiring a paid-on-call firefighters. So we're going to do an informational session first before people apply, so they kind of know what they're getting into before they apply. We're doing a little bit backwards this time, probably the right way, giving the information about how much schooling's involved, and the commitment and everything before they apply. We used to do it where we would have them apply, and then they listed candidates that we cleared, that passed our requirements for interviews. Then we did an informational session listing out the requirements. So hopefully this will answer some of the questions prior to the application period, save a little time on our end in that respect. So we're looking to hire three to five, depending on the amount of candidates we get. And just one other item, liquor licenses. We still have two outstanding liquor license renewals right now due to some fire code violations. So we're still working through that, and we're getting close down to the month. So hopefully we'll get there.
Questions? Thanks, Drew.
Regarding that, at what point do we take action?
Right.
Of July 1st.
July 1st.
July 1?
So they had their initial inspection.
On June 30th is when their license expires.
That's, okay.
So they've had an inspection, but there's some violations they have to improve.
Correct.
Okay, so at least they're in process. But are we taking action if they're not stamped and cleared by the end of June? Is that what we had to indicate?
We got a week.
We said we would.
Yep.
This year.
When did they have to have everything finished? I mean
Well, their license expires June 30th.
No, but I mean, you have to physically present the license, so is there, there must be an earlier deadline than June 30th.
Well, yeah, it was in April.
Oh, okay.
I mean, to get everything in, so.
30th is a Monday, okay.
I'm confident we can get there, but I just wanted to make note of it, that we still have small standing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Drew. Okay, I don't have anything. Anybody?
I just, I know you and I have connected on this, Mayor O'Connor, about the Tressel Bridge and Bridge Street property. And I'm just wanted to put it out there that I appreciate that to be on the next agenda, whether that's in closed session or on the actual agenda. I believe that you're just
And that's fine. So the issues here have to do with, and I don't know, it's so much about the Tressel Bridge, because that's already owned by Bruce Lenzon, but the question of the sale of, or disposition of the jointly owned property. And we still, there's so much, there are so many issues, but we can talk about it in closed session, and nothing's going to be resolved on this for quite some time, I think, because of, there are just too many unanswered questions about the actual ownership of the properties.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Move to adjourn, second.
Motion, second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody.